We started here. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held November 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Let's have our deputy clerk take the role, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Holtz?
Here.
Councilmember Carratt?
Present.
Here.
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 Here, thanks. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to let the public know that we're going to table item three under new business, which is ordinance number 724 related to the development -- I can't think of the name of the development.
Clemensaw.
Clemensaw, thank you. The applicant withdrew their application, so we're not going to discuss that this evening. If there's anybody here that was hoping to speak on that item, you're not going to have an opportunity, so didn't want you sitting here for the entire meeting if you didn't have to. But, of course, you are welcome to join us for the entire meeting, so. Anyway, first up is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything to report? It's Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Holtz's last regular meeting. They're no longer going to be with us, so I just want to say it's been great working with you, going to miss you. I'm a little jealous. Your Tuesday nights are going to just be completely different, so anyway, it's been great working with you. And, of course, we have our acting city manager with us. Yeah, and we're hoping to spring for a nice little plaque for you instead of a printed one, but we'll see. Do you have anything to report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Yeah, you got to really push on these things to get them to light up.
There we go. Okay, the airport hosted Havasu 600 Air Race on November 11th and 12th. This event was sponsored by the Rico Colorado Ninety-Nines, with local support provided by Cottonwood Airport Experimental Aircraft Association, Verde Valley Chapter 952. The race started at Bermuda Dunes, California, overnighted in Cottonwood, and finished in Lake Havasu. The Ninety-Nines is an international organization of women pilots that promote the advancement of aviation through education and scholarships. The Havasu 600 Air Race raises money for flight scholarships. On another note, the Cottonwood Public Library calls all book lovers to the Cottonwood Recreation Center this Saturday for the Verde Valley Author Expo. Meet over 30 of your favorite local authors and get a head start on your holiday shopping with a book for the whole family. The event is free and runs from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission will be holding a special meeting on Monday, November 28th at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Recreation Center, the Cottonwood Room at 150 South Sixth Street. Please note that the regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, November 21st, has been canceled. And the Historic Preservation Commission meeting schedule for November 23rd has been canceled. And lastly, the City of Cottonwood is currently seeking applications for its Airport Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Board of Adjustments, and Personnel Board. If you or someone, you or someone you know is interested, please visit the City of Cottonwood website at cottonwoodaz.gov for more information and to -- and our online applications. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here this evening to speak during call to the public? All right, we'll move on then to approval of minutes of the joint work session of September 13th, 2022, and the regular meeting of October 18th, 2022. And I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes approved. And now we have consent agenda. There's just three items this evening on our consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. So first up is scope of work cost proposal from Dibble Engineering for Taxiway A Rehabilitation Design Phase Services for the Cottonwood Municipal Airport. Item two is purchase of personal protective equipment for the Cottonwood Fire Department through the cooperative use of the City of Mesa Contract Number 2021069. And third is prosecution code enforcement services contract. Is there an item that a council member or citizen would like to have pulled? All right, I'll motion then to approve the consent agenda. Okay, Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's approved. And new business, following items are for council discussion, consideration, possible legal action. First up, item one, presentation, public hearing, and discussion regarding the fiscal year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. With me is Isabel with NACOG. We're going to go through some slides, give you some background on the Community Development Block Grant that is now upon us again. Quick four years, but it's here. Give you a little bit of background on it. It is a Housing and Urban Development Small Cities Program. So it does come from HUD down to the Arizona Department of Housing, then filters through the communities from there. Provides funds for housing and community development activities in rural Arizona. Guess doesn't want to work anymore.
Oh, there it goes.
There is criteria for funding eligibility. Maybe? What those are is at least 51% of the persons who benefit from the project must be low to moderate income. The project must aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or the project must solve an urgent need or health hazard. It is a four-year rotation for funding in each county. Again, each city within the county is on a different rotation. City of Cottonwood is on this next rotation for 2023. With that, I'll let Isabel take over on some more of the other criteria that is required in order to receive this funding.
Evening.
Hello. And the reason that we're here tonight is to have a public hearing for project input for potential projects that can be funded with the funds next year. So a little bit more on the background and overview of the Community Development Block Grant. Most of the projects meet that low moderate income national objective, and right now Cottonwood is considered 54% low to moderate income, so it actually opens you up to just about any type of project that you would want to do, as long as it serves the city would be eligible. You don't have to do an income survey or anything. We're expecting about $10 million to come to the state for CDBG, and $2.3 million to our northern Arizona region, $1.2 million to the county, and that'll trickle down to about $400,000 for the City of Cottonwood. We have to work on estimates right now. We don't get the actual allocation until early next year, but it's a long process, so this is we always start based on estimates, and then the funds are locked in usually around March of next year, but they don't vary too much generally, you know, up, down 5%. Some of the funding that comes to the state is set aside for colonialist projects, which we can't apply for because they're closer to the border. There's also 15% set aside for a competitive round. The city could choose to also put in a competitive application if they wanted to, as well as the regional funds that are automatically allocated to you. So there's a wide variety of -- oh, is this working now? There's a wide variety of projects that can be funded with CDBG funds. You can do public works projects such as water systems, road and street improvements, fire protection facilities and equipment. Is that going to bring the next? Yeah. You can do community and supportive housing facilities or removal of barriers, which is the same thing as accessibility ADA projects. So you can do food bank projects or senior center renovations or group homes, things like that. You can also fund public services, which is generally it's funds for nonprofit operational expenses. It can be healthcare-related, education programs, job training programs, senior citizen services. It always comes down to the fact that you're serving low to moderate income people. You can also do housing projects such as housing rehabilitation or home ownership assistance, neighborhood revitalization like historic preservation, clearance and demolition. You can do a planning project, housing plan, for example, or park plan. And then you can also set aside some of the funds to help with some of the administration. These are pretty administration-heavy grants.
Some of the city's prior CDB grant funds date back to the early 80s. 1982, they were used for street improvements. 85, it was housing rehab, senior center improvements. 1986 was fire equipment. 88 was, again, housing rehab, removal of some architectural barriers, center for disabled in the senior center. 1992 was, again, housing rehab, senior center renovation. 1995, we did street improvements, transitional shelter, job training, and adult daycare center improvements. In 1999, it was, again, removal of architectural barriers and street improvements. 2003, again, senior center improvements, HVAC at the Old Town Mission. 2007 was the street improvements, curb gutters and sidewalks. 2011 was the North 10th Street Improvements in between Mingus and Maine. 2015 was the Cottonwood Civic Center Improvements, what is the most recent, or one of the most recent ones that we have had done. And then the actual most recent was 2019, the Parks Master Plan and Playground Equipment Installation that's over at the kids' park now. And then for 2023, it's to be determined with whatever council decides on. What council's responsibilities are. Council does have final authority and responsibility to select the projects that most fit the city's housing and development needs. Council cannot apply for a project that is not discussed at a public hearing. That's what tonight's meeting is. If it is not brought up at tonight's meeting, it cannot be considered for approval for these funds. The public, excuse me, the public, city council, and staff all have the opportunity to identify housing and development needs and present those projects here to you tonight. At the second meeting, council will select one project for funding, possibly two, if the second project is equipment or planning. I know a few years ago, they kind of limited, you can't have a bunch of projects for the city. I think counties can still have more than one. They have up to three, I think. But the cities are limited now. And then that second public hearing that I just mentioned is going to be scheduled for January of 2023.
So what we're going to do after our intro and any questions is the hearing will be open for potential projects. I've got a sign-in sheet up here, so anybody who will be proposing a project should sign the sign-in sheet. Councils can also propose projects. And then we have a two-page pre-application form. It's basically just a short form that summarizes the projects, asking what you're going to do, what the budget is, who's it going to serve, those sorts of things. And those forms will be due to Scott by December 6th in the Planning Department. And I have some forms. I'll bring them up here. And you can also contact either one of us, and we can email the form to you. So the schedule that we're looking at overall, this is just about a year-long process. Tonight, we're having the first public hearing. The pre-application forms for any potential projects are going to be due to Scott on the 6th, or by the 6th, rather, of December. If your project needs additional funds to get done, you have to have those committed by the end of the year, then we need to -- council will select a project in January and put together a letter of intent for Department of Housing. Those are going to be due at the end of January, or February 1st, actually, to Department of Housing. Then we'll work over the next few months on putting the full application together. And those are all going to be due to the state. Well, I've got deadline of application forms to NACOG. We'll be working with the city and whoever is getting the funding on getting all the application forms together. NACOG Regional Council will approve the applications, and then they will be submitted to Department of Housing at the end of May. Then it takes a couple months for all the contract documents to get done and the release of funds, and funds should be available for the projects just about this time next year. So anybody who has a project in mind, yeah, realize funds will not be available for a year, and then you can get up to a two-year contract to get that project done. So that's our overview of the process. And are there any questions this time?
Council, do we have any questions for Ms. Rollins or Steph?
We have to -- what do we have to -- a project?
If you have an idea for what you would like funded with the CDBG funds, it doesn't have to be perfectly formed, but yes, it needs to get on the record tonight. And, you know, preferably if somebody could give just a very short overview of the project, the need, and the amount that they think it would be, but at a very minimum, the project.
And just to be clear, we are limited to just one project, correct?
You'll only be able to pick one project in the end, one construction project, but they do allow a second one if it's either equipment or planning.
Equipment or planning. Okay, okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council. I do know that there is a couple staff projects to be presented, so it's whatever you would prefer. If you want staff to go first or last, just let us know.
Okay. Well, let's open up the floor for our hearing, and I know we have a lot of our nonprofits in the room, so I don't have any way of queuing you up at this time, but you'll need to fill out Ms. Rollins' form. So I'm assuming that many of you would like to address the council this evening. We're all friends, so just raise your hand, and we'll call you up here. Yes, ma'am, in the back? Yeah, let's do, try to be concise and stick with, I would say, five-minute, yeah, five-minute time period, please.
My name is Rachel Collins. I have a nonprofit that I've had for at least four years called Elevate to Thrive, and that project is totally about housing for our unhoused veterans and senior citizens, not just here, but also in California where I started the nonprofit. And so I am interested in applying to use those funds for actual housing. Maslow's hierarchy of needs, housing is first, on the priority of needs of people who are the residents. We have so many homeless people here, increasingly becoming unhoused by Airbnb-type situations where the owners of property would rather have more income from people who can pay vacation rates than locals. And our locals don't have a place that they can afford to live, especially if they're on fixed income or age-qualified, not working any longer. So that is what I would particularly be interested in applying for the funds for, housing specifically for our age-qualified and veterans.
Very good. And your name again, ma'am? I didn't catch you.
Rachel Collins. And Elevate to Thrive is the name of the nonprofit.
All right, very good. Okay, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for hands, folks, so don't be shy. This is a brainstorming session, so we got to get all the ideas out this evening, otherwise -- yes, ma'am, please step forward. Well, don't do that.
I apologize. I am returning it.
Hi.
Evening.
My name is Lindoa Heda. I'm with the Community Health Center of Yavapai in our Cottonwood Division. We are hoping to optimize our electronic health system to better serve our community members and meet our FQHC quality metrics and our CMS metrics. By doing so, we can hopefully open our doors to more community members. Now, as they mentioned, our community is growing astronomically, and our socioeconomics are on the lower end. We do provide sliding fee schedules. We do not turn patients away if they are not able to pay. We are asking for a large sum of $313,000 for a company named OSIS to help support us with our best practices to help meet that need.
Okay.
That's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forms up here.
Great, thanks. All right, any other? Tanya, Ms. Sims?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's nice to see all of you. It's been a while, I think. So I have several -- I'm Tanya Sims. I'm with Verde Valley Habitat for Humanity, and we're all about housing. Everything we do is housing. So I have several ideas because we all know that we're in a critical housing crisis. So we're either trying to house people in our community, or we're trying to keep them housed. So one of the first ideas is we run a critical home repair program. We typically conserve 20 to 35 households in a year throughout the Verde Valley, so we're not just in Cottonwood, but we're in the Verde Valley. And we can expand our critical home repair program. And with funding, the CDBG funding, we could actually increase the dollar amounts that we are able to put into a home to renovate and improve. We have a lot of folks who end up with a lot of water damage, which is really interesting. So we could do total roof replacements where, you know, $15,000 is pretty much an average cost these days. We could do partial bathroom remodels. We have a lot of seniors. So most of the individuals, homeowners that we serve in our critical home repair are 65 and older, a lot of seniors who have difficulty maintaining their homes. So we would increase and expand our critical home repair program so that we could serve more individuals and keeping that housing stock. So we have a concern about keeping that housing stock as well. So that would be one. It's also, so we could run the program ourselves if we applied for and received the CDBG funding, but we could also partner with the City of Cottonwood. So if the City of Cottonwood applied and received the funding themselves, then we could contract with the city and we could run the program. We currently have a partnership with NACOG where we receive Yavapai County CDBG funds, and we've been able to serve more individuals in the community because we've had that partnership. So we have the experience, is what I'm trying to share. Another one is we have -- are all of you familiar with the USDA 502 Mortgage Lending Program? Are none of you familiar? In USDA, yes, the United States Department of Agriculture has a program called 502, because the government likes numbers, right? So it's a mortgage application program for low to moderate income households in rural communities, and it's only available to people in rural communities. We are what's called a loan packager for that program, so applicants can come to us, they can package. So we're kind of like a morgager. We package those loans, we submit them to USDA, they qualify, we pre-qualify them, they qualify, they get a certificate of eligibility, and they can purchase a home on the market in your community, and we can help them through that process. So as a loan packager, we have -- what we're experiencing right now is USDA's maximum loan amount that they, people can borrow if they qualify, is $336,500. So at that price point, we don't have a whole lot of homes available for purchase, resale purchase. So we're looking at developing a program where we could help subsidize a payment and have a down payment assistance program of our own. So say there's a home for $350,000 available on the market, we would work with the applicant, they would qualify for their initial loan through USDA, and then the rest of that would be subsidized in a very similar way that we subsidize homes now, but we would call it a down payment assistance program. We could house quite a few more families in the Verde Valley if we had a program like that. So that's another idea. We also, I couldn't remember, so the other two projects are really dependent on whether the funds can be used in homes in the Verde villages or not. So if it's just city limits, does anyone know the answer to that? City limits, okay. So the other ones won't actually work because we have some properties that we can develop for housing in the Verde villages, so I think that's it.
Okay.
That's it. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you for being here. Did you fill the form out?
No, I'm going to. Thank you for reminding.
Who else would like to participate in the hearing? Am I -- oh, I don't see. Okay, Ms. Remner? Ms. Bremner?
She's got her hand on it.
I had a feeling we would see you this evening.
Good evening. Pardon me?
I said I had a feeling we would see you this evening.
Yes, well, I never look, want to look past a good thing.
That's right.
These are big dollar signs. Good evening. My name's Elaine Bremner. I'm the Executive Director at the Verde Valley Senior Center, as you all know. But regarding CDBG funding, we've had quite a few projects in the part, over the last 20 years, to put together the senior center and restore it, which is, as you know, over 100 years old. Now, a lot of work's been done on that building, and the city actually has an investment in it, in the renovation of it, as does Camp Verde and Clark Dale and, and the tribe, and so, and the county. And county had a lot of money involved, you know, invested. And so, do you want a breakdown of those funds at all? No?
Of the historic funds?
No, the, the money that went into restoring the building to its current?
Oh, no, no, I think just, just focus on, on your plan for this, this amount of funding that we're talking about.
So it's, it's reached the point, 100-year-old building, there are a lot of things that weren't done. And one of the things is, the brick needs to be, the building needs to be repointed, the brick, the grout, and it needs to be resealed in order for it to stand for another 100 years. And this is critical, actually, because I think you as a contractor, or a couple of contractors sitting up here, would know that brick doesn't last forever, and it does crumble, and so does the, so does the grout in between the bricks, the concrete, which is over 100 years old, and it was developed before they even had fly ash, you know? So there's no fly ash in the brick, in the, in the, in the grouting. So my proposal is that it would probably take close to $400,000 to repoint and reseal that building. And that's a pretty good estimate, and I'm, I'm figuring based on a prior estimate I obtained some years ago, which was around $250,000 at that time, to get it done. Okay. We have other projects have been done with CDBG funds, as, as I mentioned, and one big one was the covered, the steel-covered parking with the solar panels. So it being an investment, we want that to stay intact, and it serves a lot of people, as you know. Hundreds of people every week are there. And according to the, to what's on the form, this is what it would be used for, to finish that building off. So it is the masterpiece it was meant to be. This is located at 500 East Cherry Street, and it would solve a huge problem, and so we wouldn't have anything, bricks being dislodged and falling down on people, you know, that could happen. And it serves more than 51% of, of the senior population by the number of people that come there. We would probably have to bring someone from Phoenix to do the job. Currently, I don't know of anyone in, in Prescott or Flagstaff that, that does that kind of work. Is anything particular that you would like to know beyond that?
No, I think just-
What needs to be done and the cost of it, you know?
Yeah, no, I think that summarizes it very well, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Well, thank you. I'll complete the form and fill it in.
Very good. Thanks for being here this evening.
Well, thank you. Nice to see you all.
All right, anyone else? Any takers? This is, this is our one and only opportunity to, to come up with as many ideas as possible, so. Mr. Teal?
I was all the members of the-
Ms. Sims?
I forgot to mention one.
Okay, just come, come back up to the podium then, okay.
Just one more word.
I apologize, I forgot to mention one, so thank you for letting me come back up. So the last one, the last idea is developing a land trust. So we're all concerned about permanent affordability and, when we're creating affordable housing. So if you have a land trust, you can create permanent affordability so that that property stays permanently affordable for up to 99,000, 99,000 years? No, 90 years. So that was the other idea, is we would be willing to do that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Teal?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Jack Teal, Parks and Recreation Director with the City of Cottonwood. Project that I had for this would be building a outdoor fitness court at one of our parks or along, along our trail system. As you know, being healthy and being able to have access to healthy exercises is important for any thriving community. We have this beautiful facility, but it's not accessible to every person within our community. Adding an outdoor fitness court would make that accessibility for everyone in our community. These are something that are popping up all over the world. It's a passive recreational sport that people can do at any point in time, and allows anyone from the community to get out, get involved, and have that healthy lifestyle. I think we can do this project with as little as $250,000, or as big as the entire $400,000 based on the size of fitness court we'd like to put in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, please, Ms. Boone?
I think most of my ideas have already been brought up tonight by others. The, the last one that I would just like to get on the record is that we could possibly use this funding to acquire property, for the city to acquire property for supportive housing, to be managed by and possibly leased to a local nonprofit. So I meet regularly with a group of local nonprofits, VVCCNP, and several of those organizations have a need for more housing for programs they already have. They simply don't have units to put people into, even though they have some funding to help with that. So since not all of them could be here tonight, I would just propose that perhaps it's a city project in conjunction with a nonprofit partner.
Okay. And Ms. Boone, would you just introduce yourself and let us know who you represent, please?
I apologize. Shannon Boone, I'm the Housing Manager for the City of Cottonwood.
Great, thank you. All right. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Again, I'm Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. One idea that we had is to look at doing a bike and pedestrian safety plan to benefit people who depend on pedestrian, bike, and transit modes of travel. It would be a, the deliverable would be exactly that, a plan to identify priority places for improvements, plans for typical treatment of key intersections, best-practice street sections showing typical bike lane through lane and sidewalk widths. Would not produce construction plans. Those could come later if the city decides to move forward with that kind of stuff. We could kind of tie it into the upcoming general plan update as, as a guide to doing those improvements based on that plan with current best practices. We'd look at, obviously, getting a consultant for that, to do that kind of plan. So that, that is our idea.
All right. Any other staff members? Anybody else from the public? Mr. Rodriguez, did you have anything else to add?
No, Mayor, not at this point. Thank you, though.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any, anything to share? I, I certainly liked what I heard this evening, and I think we have a, a lot of good projects to choose from, particularly around housing. I think that's been a big priority for, for council, and of course, our community. Any pet projects that you want to, you want to share with the group?
There you go. No, I'd just like to see-
A project, possibly, that would-
Sure. Yeah, you gotta really press down on that, sorry.
I'll tell you what I'd like to do.
Anyway, a project that would meet most of our, our residents and businesses' needs.
Okay. Do you feel like we, we have enough that was mentioned here this evening to, you know, to, to pick and choose from?
I, I did have a question. Were all of our city department heads involved in the project process? I, I thought that we might see a project related to our own Mingus wastewater treatment plant, since that is a critical infrastructure project. We have, it's my understanding, millions of dollars of work that we're, we're looking at for that. So I understand if we have that properly budgeted in our own budget, that's just fine. But I did just have a, that question, I guess, for Scott, to make sure that we did offer ample opportunity for all of our city departments to weigh in.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, yes. It was brought up at several internal department head meetings, emails went out. Yes, it did go out to all the department heads several times.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Anything else from, from council?
Let me get ready it up. That's good. Try it, is that better? The skating rink could definitely use an overhaul.
Okay, skating rink, okay. All right. Anything else?
Just a reminder, if you did speak, please grab one of these forms to return to me by December 6th.
Okay. All right. Going once, going twice? We're gonna go ahead and, yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name's Melissa Garcia. I am with the Community Health Center of Yavapai. I apologize for my slip in the door a little bit ago. I do wanted to add that I know Linda, my coworker, discussed a project that we are trying to implement, and I wanted to piggyback off of a comment that was made, that how can we, with this funding, meet the most needs of the community or reach the most people? And healthcare is a key part of the community, health and wellness, and we're here to meet the needs of everyone in the community. We don't refuse services to anyone if they're unable to pay. We're the only agency in Yavapai County that can do this. We actually see patients in our dental department that nobody else in Yavapai County will touch. Same thing, they, we have patients that come in with years of drug use, domestic violence, they don't have any teeth left. Our dentists are able to spend hours with them and bring their smile back, and that in turn actually brings revenue back into the community, because they're able to return to work. They, it improves health and wellness, mental, physical, from all, from entire realm. So I know how, housing is a key priority, but what, we also have to take on additional measures for those who are already here in Yavapai County and meet the needs of those who are uninsured, underinsured. We have a high uninsured rate, higher than the state average. You know, it's just something to consider. We hope that you'll give our proposal more food for thought, because it really truly does extend beyond. And not only that, we are a nonprofit as well. We are one of the few agencies in the United States that double as an FQHC, federally qualified health center, and a community, community health center, and a governmental agency. So we have a nonprofit side as well. Just for example, one thing that we do with our nonprofit side is we pay for breast cancer treatment for women who are uninsured and underinsured, who would be unable to access treatment otherwise. So we really are multi-dimensional and extend into so many ways that, to improve the health and wellness of, of the Verde Valley. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, well, I guess we'll close, close the floor then. And Ms. Rollins, is there anything else that we need to do this, this evening? No? Okay. Well, I want to just thank all the, our nonprofit partners that came in to, to share with us your ideas for the CDBG funding. It's, as you can see from the historical list, we've certainly used it to great benefit in our community in, in years past, so I expect we'll do the same with this round of funding.
And Counsel, I, great programs that were being shown. I would not want to be in your shoes to make this particular decision, so they're really great programs. One thing we might suggest is looking at our strategic plan to see which project actually fits best in our strategic plan, excuse me, our strategic plan, when you go to make these decisions. Thank you.
I, I agree, yeah. So what, what are the next steps, then, just so the public's aware?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, that form that we had everybody take is the pre-application form. It'll give a little bit more detail, the anticipated cost of their project. We'll compile that, provide counsel with more information at a January 2nd public hearing. We'll advertise that. Again, I believe that timeline is 16 days before the meeting.
Okay.
Do a PSA, put it in the newspaper, make sure that it is advertised, bring those projects back to you with more detail on what you, what's selected from.
Okay. And then at that second meeting in January, is that when we make our decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, let's move on then to item two, which is Proposed Letter to the Legislative Housing Supply Study Committee.
Shannon Boone, Housing Manager for the City of Cottonwood. Counselors, you have in your packet a letter prepared to the Legislative Housing Supply Study Committee as a response to the hearing held recently in Sedona. It summarizes the city's sort of opposition to broad-based state mandated by-right zoning, as was proposed in the last legislative session, and suggests that the state's role in furthering housing development might be to provide infrastructure funding to expand the, the size of our systems.
We just wanted to run this letter past council, we felt like it would be stronger if it was signed by the entire council, rather than just me. There's other valley mayors that are submitting their own letters, but I thought we'd get council's stamp of approval on this, if it looks good.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the draft letter to the Legislative Housing Supply Study Committee.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Wildin made the motion, and Councilmember Holc seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. All right, I would motion to table item three, as they withdrew their application.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's tabled. Item four is Resolution Number 3152, approving a minor amendment to the city's general plan, changing the land use designation for approximately 1.7 acres of land located on the north side of Birch Street, approximately 375 feet east of South Main Street, 1642 and 1644 East Birch Street, from VLR, Very Low Density Residential, to HR, High Density Residential.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Gary Davis with Community Development. I have a brief presentation on this item and the next item, which is related. This is a, as you mentioned, a first read, this is a resolution for a minor amendment of the general plan, and then also accompanying a zone change application, first reading of a, a zone change ordinance on that. This is a description of the area that's proposed for the minor amendment to the general plan. The site is in crosshatch pattern here. It's currently designated Very Low Density Residential, the VLR. Directly to the south is the HR, which is the designation that's proposed for this site. To the east and just to the west, there is a bit of Medium Density Residential designated as well. This property is within about a five-acre area that's kind of an island of Very Low Density Residential, surrounded by commercial, the general commercial you see on the west along Main Street, and the Minor, Minor Density, or Ma, excuse me, the Medium Density Residential to the, to the east and to the north. Accompanying that, as I mentioned, is a proposed zone change to R3 Zone- to R3 Zone, Multi-Family Zone, that would be, again, sandwiched between existing R2 Development on the east and west and to the north, and R4 Development directly to the south. And again, the property is located about a block east of Main Street on the north side of Birch. The proposed project went to Planning and Zoning Commission at the same time as the, the amendment and the zone change application did. They approved a design review package for a project that would be 40 units, multi-family, on this one and three-quarter acre parcel. It's divided into 16 one-bedroom, 16 two-bedroom, and eight efficiency units, with a number of amenities, including attached carport parking. This is a site plan of the property. The property, this plan is rotated 90 degrees to the right, so on the very left, you see Birch Street, which is the south edge of the property. The parking area would be in the center of the property, and the buildings, four buildings would be located on the edges of the property. Parking would be located in the center between the buildings, as well as a carport space underneath the buildings. And this is a rendering. You can see at the bottom especially, the proposed arrangement of the carport parking, as well as the, the parking in the middle of the, of the, of the driveways. The proposal for the rezone and for the change in the general plan, it's supported by policies that are in the general plan right now. In, in Chapter Four Land Use, they have recommendations specifically for this area, the main and Mingus area, and it supports revitalization areas in the area, including assembly and consolidation of properties to allow for pedestrian-oriented residential density development. Again, this is a block away from Main Street, a very walkable location potentially. Also, in that section on the main and Mingus area, supports a variety of residential types and styles, and encourages infill development and redevelopment. Again, this is a, kind of a classic infill project. So, that's the proposal for the amendment and the zone change. I believe we do have representatives of the applicant here, if you have any questions on the project. But again, this action is, for the Council's purposes, is focused on the resolution for the amendment of the general plan and the zoning, not specifically the, the project itself, which has been already approved for design review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, great. Any questions for, no, for staff? No, okay. Do we wish to hear from the applicant? Any questions for the applicant?
I would have some la, I would have some later, but not-
Not now, okay. All right, then, I am willing to hear a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 3152.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion, Councilmember Carratt seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mary Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, please read Resolution Number 3152 by title only.
Resolution Number 3152, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, approving a minor amendment to the city's general plan. Use designation. Approximately 1.7 acres. East of South Main Street, north of East Birch Street, from VLR, Very Low Density Residential, to HR, High Density Residential.
Right, yes.
A lot of that did not record. The light was on a lot.
Well, luckily, luckily she takes the minutes, so she'll, she'll, she'll fill in the blanks. All right. Yeah, we're having a hard time with these mics tonight. So, okay, great. So, that's passed. Let's move on to the next and last item under new business, which is ordinance number 725, zone change from AR20 Agricultural Residential Zone to R3 Multiple Family Residential Zone for approximately 1.7 acres located 375 feet east of South Main Street and north of East Birch Street, 1642 and 1644 East Birch Street. First reading.
Mayor and Council, what I just said.
Okay. Did you want to ask your questions of the applicants now? No, okay, great. Then, I would motion to approve ordinance Number 725. What, oh, first reading, never mind. I'll do that.
Next time.
Yeah, next time. You won't be here.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yes, let's have our deputy clerk, please read loud and clear, ordinance Number 725.
Ordinance Number 725, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for Yavapai County APN, plural, 406-45-066 and 406-45-067, so as to change their current zoning designation of AR20 Agricultural Residential to R3 Multi-Family Residential.
Okay, great, thank you. I move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Uh, Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, it's your last meeting, I mean, come on.
I will motion to adjourn.
Second.
And get new, uh-
Yeah. Councilmember Matthews made the motion, Councilmember Wildin seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
You could have given that one to him.